He's a lot younger than me.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Pat McGrath. I'm the attorney for the Jefferson County Plan Commission. We're going to call the meetings of order here in just a minute. I just wanted to take a minute to go over kind of what the procedure of the meeting is and where it's going to be. The Plan Commission's going to call the meetings of order, and then when they do, they'll take up the agenda, and I think everybody has seen the agenda, otherwise probably wouldn't be here. And then the Plan Commission's going to have an opportunity to talk amongst themselves just to make sure that they understand what the issue is and what the history of the issue is, and then at the appropriate time, there will be a call for public comment from the audience. We do have a number of people here this evening, so we want to try to keep things as orderly as possible. We are going to have a podium set up for people to come up and talk. If you are going to come up and speak to the Plan Commission, please make sure that you've signed in. Please make sure that you state your name and your address before you begin speaking so that everybody can be identified. Please make sure that you address all of your comments to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission is the one who's going to be reviewing it this evening and making a decision, and so there's no need for people to be speaking with each other. In fact, we're going to shut down anything that involves comments back and forth between members of the audience. Please address all of your comments to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission will ask questions as we go. We do have a number of people. We do want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard. Certainly, everybody who wants to speak tonight will get that opportunity, but we need to make sure that we keep it within reasonable bounds. So what that means is that everybody's going to have an opportunity, one opportunity, to address the Plan Commission, so please make sure that you've got your thoughts organized. When you do come up to address the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission will most likely not be giving opportunities for a second opportunity to speak to the Plan Commission, with one exception, and that is that, I think, as everybody knows, the agenda focuses primarily on the Chapo's property. So the Plan Commission would like to invite the Chapos to speak first, if they would like to, certainly aren't required to, and then we would also like to give you the opportunity to speak last after everything else is spoken because it does focus primarily on your land. Aside from that, then, we're going to have a rough time limit, rough three to five minutes per person. Obviously, we're not going to have a clock going the whole time, but again, this is the idea of trying to keep things reasonable and reasonably moving forward, and we expect for everybody to handle this in a civil fashion and move forward, you know, going forward with it. This is the Plan Commission, and the issue for the agenda this evening has to do with enforcement of the zoning issue. The Plan Commission can make certain recommendations to commissioners going forward from that point. So with that, I believe that we're going to turn it over then and start the Plan Commission meeting. Does everybody have an idea of the procedures? Are there any questions about the procedures? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move the podium into place before we're going to be started.
I'm going to call this meeting the Jefferson County Plan Commission of order. We have a forum, so. We have a letter of communication I think all the board members should have received from Dr. Duquette. And there's no other current business, so I think we'll move on to the item in question tonight, so I think we're an opportunity for the board to talk about it, because we've got new board members that wasn't here at the time this came up before, so. How do you want to kind of start about that?
Sure. Ordinarily, Steve Wilson, who's our zoning enforcement officer, would address you and let you know what the history of the election violation is up to now. Unfortunately, Mr. Wilson is ill tonight and cannot be here, so I agreed to kind of fill in the board, the Plan Commission. This situation starts with an application for conditional use that was filed in 2012 by Joseph and Sherry Chapo with regard to their property out of Deputy Pike. There was an application for a gunsmith operation and an indoor-outdoor tactical and test firing range. After that application was submitted to the, I'm sorry, the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals, they had a hearing that began on, I believe, October 2nd, 2012, at 5:00. That meeting actually ran long, and there was a number of people who came and commented at that. The Board of Zoning Appeals tabled the issue for additional hearing. The hearing was then recommenced on November 7th, 2012. The Board of Zoning Appeals took up the permit in two conditional use permit applications, one of them being for the gunsmith operation or for the, yeah, what was listed as the actual sale of firearms, and then the other one for the actual firing range. The Board of Zoning Appeals then went through the findings of fact with regard to each of the conditional uses, and they voted in favor of to approve the conditional use for the actual sale of the firearms, and then they voted to deny the conditional use with regard to the tactical firing range. Everybody, I think, has, all the members have received copies of the findings of fact, I think, with regard to those conditional uses. Specifically, the findings of fact on number seven, that there were three votes nay and two abstaining, which meant that number seven did not carry with regard to whether or not the activities would be non-detrimental, and that's the reason that the conditional use did not pass. Subsequently, then, we received a complaint from a citizen, which is the Duquetts. The Duquetts filed their complaints, and they actually called in a complaint and then subsequently sent in a written complaint, which all the members have a copy of, which is dated March 31st, indicating that there was, in fact, a tactical firing range ongoing at the property in question. Then the zoning enforcement officer conducted some investigation, I believe, primarily in the form of checking out the site through the Internet and the advertising information that was available for the company that had been formed, which I believe is called Deputy Big Shots, Deputy Big Shots, I think is what it's called, and then as a result of that information, did, in fact, find that there had been a violation of the Jefferson County zoning ordinances. A order enforcing the Jefferson County ordinance then was issued to Joseph and Sherry Chapo, notifying them that they were in violation and ordering them to discontinue the use as an illegal use under the Jefferson County ordinances. And then the Chapos then sent in a written response dated April 19th, 2016, giving a response to the order and giving some basic statement of their position. Not included in the packet was, there was a FOIA request from the Chapos requesting specifically any county ordinances that specifically regulated shooting ranges, and we, the Jefferson County Plan Commission, are not the ones who maintain the ordinances, but to the extent that we maintain any ordinances, which would be the zoning ordinance, we don't have any zoning ordinances that are specific to firing ranges. We have general zoning ordinances that do, in fact, cover the issue, but not necessarily specifically. So the response was made that we don't have documents responsive to it other than the zoning ordinance in place now, as well as the zoning ordinance in place prior to 1996, I believe was the request. And in response, in addition to that response, the notice was given to the Chapos of this special meeting to address the issue, and then obviously, public notice was put in. So that's the very, very short, for me, version of the history. The issue then being presented to the Plan Commission is how to proceed with enforcement. You are an advisory Plan Commission, which means that you serve to advise the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. There are steps within our ordinance for pursuing the enforcement of an ordinance. Usually, the first step is having the zoning enforcement officer issue an order, which has been done. To our knowledge, there has not been a discontinuance of the use, as far as we know, that the use is still ongoing as of the state, and so then the question after presentation would be, you know, whether or not the Plan Commission would intend to recommend litigation to the Jefferson County Commissioners.
Okay, any questions or comments among the Plan Commission? Questions for Pat? Should be okay? Okay, I guess we'll start with public comment with Mr. and Mrs. Chapo. Would you like to comment to start?
I have no comment.
No comment, okay. All right, then, we'll welcome anybody else to come up. Anybody else like to speak before we hear them?
Sure. I guess I'll start. I think you've already stated that they're ignoring.
Sir, if you don't mind, before you start, would you please state your name and your address?
I live right next to them, 10460 West Deputy Pike in Depey, Indiana. My name is Dr. Jesse Duquette.
Okay, and have you signed in, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, the first thing I want to bring to your attention is, this is their grand opening, which you could, we could do.
The members actually already have a copy. The Duquette is showing.
They're going to have a shootout the end of this month and beginning of next month.
This is the April issue of Trigger Time?
Yes.
Which is the sort of updated newsletter that is published on the Deputy Big Shots website?
Yes, yeah, so they're having a grand opening where they're going to have multiple shooters and, of course, charge April 30th and May 1st from noon to 6:00 p.m., and the range is open seven days a week till 7:00 p.m. So, I mean, living next to that, where, again, if, let me see if I can find that. Well, here's, I mean, here's the map. I mean, you can see multiple residences within, you know, 500 feet. And this is, this is their event that they held in March, and as you can see, their general recommendation, their minimum recommendation for the number of rounds is 800 per person, 28 people, so that's about 30,000 rounds in one day. So, I mean, that's not really pleasant to listen to all day long on the weekend, not to mention the fact that, you know, how safe that is. You know, the big take home is that I'm really concerned that somebody that's operating and selling ammunition and high caliber rifles, this is my general statement, that aren't compliant and don't obey the law can go ahead and sell this stuff, and, you know, they have a, I've already put this in writing, but they have two ranges. One is 15 to 100 yards with 10 lane shoot house, and the other one is an open, you know, 500 yard range, and they sell 50 caliber, you know, rifles, and they've got grenades and assault rifles, and as you can tell by their grand opening, that they're going to have, you know, a raffle, I guess, for shooting up a fully automatic, you know, machine gun. When you look at their site, which I know that you guys have, and I'm kind of going over this like a, I mean, when you have 28 people dressed in body armor going up, you know, a 500 yard lane and, you know, trained how to, you know, assault something, I mean, it's not like you're, we're zeroing in things for hunting, and it's, you know, if you bring 800 rounds of ammunition, it's not like you're zeroing in a hunting rifle and you're going to go hunting. I mean, it's plain and simple paramilitary training, and we, as a community, must ask ourselves, what benefit is there in this and what risk? Do we want to ignore the risk of training the next American recruited ISSL or homegrown team of personnel that may go postal, you know? How about the next DC sniper or simply someone killed from an accidental fire on this open 500 yard range? And as you look, you clearly look at the map, I mean, my home's within 500 feet of this range, and I just, another thing that we need to look at too with the grand opening is now they have a primitive camping site, and I'm not sure if that's a whole nother zoning ordinance. So if we have 20 to 50 people camped out on their property overnight, are they zoned commercially for a campground as well? And how are they disposing of the garbage and human waste? And what is this going to be doing to the property values of everything around us? I mean, if you look north on that property, within like, you know, a thousand yards or so, or a couple lakers, I mean, you have, you know, the lake up there, and you have several residences around the lake. I just, I'm kind of beside myself because I just don't understand how somebody could just ignore the law and, as well as, you know, the community and put lives at risk just simply to make a buck, and I just don't understand how this benefits Jefferson County because basically, somebody's going to get killed. I mean, whether it's there or they're going to be trained to do it, because if you get on their website, it's all, aside rifles, it's all, I mean, it's all, you know, it, I mean, I just really, I, I'm just kind of beside myself because I'm basically even going through this, I'm just concerned, they're not going to be compliant, they're going to just keep doing what they're doing, they don't, they don't recognize the law, they don't care about the law, and they're just going to do what they want to do regardless of, you know, what this board does, and it kind of scares me that we have somebody selling guns and equipping people with guns and training people how to use, you know, guns in an assault manner and.
Thank you for your comment. Over time, thank you. If you want to summarize in 30 seconds.
I understand if you could, again, I just, I hope we, as a community, can kind of come together and recognize what this is and what we're encouraging within our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'm new to this group, so this is the first of the action that I went through. As I listen this evening and I review some of this, I'm not quite understanding because I don't see it as a role of this board to determine whether it was appropriate, not appropriate, whether it's appropriate now, whether there's problems with it, there wasn't problems with it. It appears that at some point in time, there was a need for, recognized to change the zoning for a conditional use permit, that conditional use permit was denied, and if there is a need for that conversation as to whether this is, should have a conditional use, so forth, it wouldn't be before this body, correct? That would be before the zoning appeals?
That's correct.
I mean, our only role this evening is to determine if there is a violation that exists, and if so, what action do we want to take in my.
That's correct.
So, you know, I'm sure there's lots of people that could speak up pro and con of what all this is, good, bad, or so forth, but I don't see where that really enters into our decision tonight.
That's correct.
Our decision is strictly, you know, it seems to appear to me, unless someone can show me something contrary, and I'd be more than willing to hear that information, that this came before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they were told, no, we can't operate this type of operation, and from what I've been presented on website information and so forth, they are operating the operation that had been denied. And whether pros cons, whether they should have it, not have it, that's not my decision to make.
That's correct. Under Jefferson County ordinance, all petitions for conditional use go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. This conditional use permit did go before the Court of Zoning Appeals and was denied. The Plan Commission then would be the body that would recommend enforcement. The only issue is whether or not there's been a violation and what, what to do as far as enforcement. That's correct.
Is there anyone that would want to present information this evening that there has not been a violation?
Did you read our response? Have you been submitted a response?
The response, the Chapo's response was received by the Jefferson County Plan Commission and has been distributed to each of the members.
We've been asked a procedure, and we're going to stick to it, so let's, if there's somebody else, if we'd like to come up to, to oppose or whatever, we'll, we'll, we'll check them up. Give your names.
We're making sure that all the members have copies of everything. This is what the Chapo's response looks like.
The only thing they didn't get was that thing.
This was, this was.
I don't think I've seen a response.
No, I have not seen a response.
Would you not, would you not agree to the members of the material? I apologize. I thought you guys had all got it. Would you not, would you not agree to the members of the material? I apologize.
or not their initial application was denied, and from what I can understand in reading through it, it was denied, that it wasn't a matter that just one instance regarding noise was denied. If I understand correctly, the zoning board, if any of these things are not approved, then it fails, correct?
That's correct.
So if, from the county's viewpoint or our viewpoint, there's no question, but it was denied initially.
Correct.
Correct. And then there seems to be no question that there is currently a shooting range being operated at the facility.
That's, yeah, that's it.
From what I can see, and so.
It doesn't appear to be contested.
I don't see anything there that changes my thoughts on it either way.
Okay, you want to address this?
Okay, my name is Tamara Duquette, Dr. Duquette's wife, 10460 West Deputy Pike in Depey. I'd like to, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but one of the reasons we're telling you a lot more than about zoning is that it's currently operating, which you know, we live right next door to it, and so there's nothing that can be done about it at this time, so as you move forward, I understand this is a slow process, but in the meantime, we are living in a dangerous situation. I'd like to take a minute for you guys to hear a recording that's taken inside my house, so I'm inside my house. I also like to mention for you guys who do not know, we have seven children, we have five children still at home, I have a granddaughter, I have a father who now moved in and lives with us, so we're responsible for all those people, and they live in our house, and they also have to live with us. And I know some of this is in that letter we wrote up, but I would like you to take time to think about, if you had seven children and you had them playing outside, or if your grandchildren were playing outside, would you want them in the woods next to a gun range? Would you like to have people camping that you don't know and have your children out in the woods with that? And also, I'm going to play this video, and I'm going to show you this picture, and I'd like for you to think about being 19 years old, fighting Afghanistan for Madison, for Depey. That's my family. That soldier's coming home. He cannot come home to this gun range, and you think, oh, maybe he's in the rear of the gear, it's no big deal. This is a book that just came out about his deployment in Afghanistan, and there's a TV series about it. So he was not in the rear of the gear, he was on the front lines. He saw 23 of his buddies blown up that he fought with at 19, and he's going to come home. Sorry, I'm shaking, I'm like a pilot speaker. And he's going to hear this. That was six minutes, he pays good to listen to all six minutes, because I listened to 13 hours of it. 82nd Airborne, soldiers coming home to hear that. He's no big deal coming home. You look at me and tell me, my son cannot come home, and this is zoning process, the only thing I could do. The sheriff can't come out, I've called them, and I have to wait months for this, I have to live with this. I have a business, I will take my business someplace else, it won't stay in Madison because I have to leave. I employ people here, I, I'm responsible for the families. I will take my business someplace else because I obey the zoning laws, and the only people that are, I could go through to help me is here, because nobody else is listening to me. Unless you still want to listen to it, you can. It goes on.
Unfortunately, probably don't have time to listen to that six minutes.
I know. Another thing you need to think about is my neighbors and myself that are around the gun range, live hot rounds, hot rounds. What happens if a hot round misses and starts to fire? The trailer across from me broke down. 25 minutes it took for Kent to bring the water up. I had deputy volunteer fire fighters there. We helped get the lady out in her child. 25 minutes to get water in there. They couldn't do anything, so you're going to have all that land that's going to be around it, all those homes, who's going to help them? Who's going to help me? The only time this year for it to come out, if there's a ricochet, what if it ricochets on my children? Ricochets on me? Something happens to my kids, you better believe I will be going all over the news, and I will make sure people know that, you know, this is the only way I could go. We have got to stop this now. We can't wait for the slow process, there's got to be an answer to me, and somebody's going to tell me where to go, because I will keep knocking down doors until I find a way to keep my family safe. And my son's coming home to me. I've waited since 2011, and he's coming home. He talks about going to Depey all the time. My home's Depey, he doesn't want to go move someplace else. He wants to come back to his home. I hope you guys love him.
No, here you go, man.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else?
The only other issue that I saw on the phone.
Richard Moore, I live on 3460 North Spry Road. Been there all my life. We was there long before the Chapos were. There's six of us, and that small community now has got major health problems, and we hear this shooting from the daylight to dark every night, seven days a week. They're shooting exploding targets or something, they've cracked all the drywall, we put it in my new family room and stuff last winter, just from shaking the house, they've cracked two of my new windows, American window. It's getting old, folks. I mean, they was turned down for a shooting range, why are we out there shooting and nobody wants to do anything about it? I don't mind if something comes down, well, that's our business, but don't disrupt your whole neighborhood and all your neighbors. We brought a petition down here, and there was 83 people in a three mile area, and 80 out of them 83 people signed it, not to have it, but yet they went ahead and put it in, law doesn't bite for them. We have to go with the law, but they don't have to, and that's just not right. That's something to think about. John, I'll tell you, I'm a straight shooter, I'm not standing up here doing any by a hard time, that's just how it is. Right, John?
I'd say the other issue that I don't know to address one way or the other would be legal counsel, but, you know, of course, if be legal councils, but of course, if we're going to issue an order, or the order that we have issued, I do want it to comply with whatever it needs to comply with, state or county ordinance. I have no opinion as to whether it applies or it doesn't apply, but I can understand if we've issued a order that doesn't comply, it needs to be corrected, so it does. But I don't see anything else that, in the response, there is information there that deals with liability relating to statute to that, but it also has a clause, if the construction, the operation of the shooting range was legal at the time of initial construction. And I would tend to argue that the zoning condition was not given, the conditional zoning, and it would not have been considered to be legal at the time of construction.
So to address your concern with regards to the order, the order that was issued, which everybody does have a copy of that, right? That parallels the language directly from our zoning ordinance, which sets out what the procedure is for the zoning enforcement officer to issue a cease and desist order. The reference to 2011-2, actually, the secretary in communication with the recorder's office pulled it, we have a copy available to the members if you'd like to see it, but I don't see anything in 2011-2 that would apply directly to the issuance of this cease and desist order. It appears to be a general codification ordinance by the county, which recodifies the county ordinances with all amendments through that date. And then with regard to the liability issue, you're referencing the Chapeau's reference to 142231.56, and that's a, I mean, it is a provision in the code, it does potentially provide some immunity from civil lawsuits, from, for example, nuisance lawsuits, but my opinion is that it does not apply to the situation.
According to their advertisements, they're also not following the rules that they are selling the guns and things either, because the times were Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:00, and evening hours and Saturday hours by appointment, nothing on Sundays. And according to what I've been reading, they're open on Sundays, they're open until later than that at night, so it doesn't look like they're abiding by the rules of the first selling of the guns and ammunition either. So we need to address that as well as this one.
Any other comments from the visitors?
My name's Frances Grant, 979 West Dupuy, I live about two-tenths of a mile east of the shooting range. And my husband had open-heart surgery and now he's recuperating from cancer, and he cannot go out on the back porch and sit in the swing because of all the noise. And it does go on seven days a week, even during church time. And we would really appreciate if we could just stay by the original that they were And I also have a sister and a brother-in-law that has open-heart surgery, and they live about a tenth of a mile east of us also. And the noise is just, it just drops from there. And it is seven days a week.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Ms. Ms. Chapeau, would you like to address this? Nobody else?
I would like to read into our line to the record, please. I would like to speak after that.
Hello, I'm Mike Totten, I live at 322 West Main Street here in Madison. I've been reading the letter that you all received just a few minutes ago, dated April 19th, to Jefferson County zoning department regarding order enforcing the Jefferson County zoning ordinance dated 4/6/2016 regarding a shooting range on our property and the special meeting called for by the Jefferson County Plan Commission. Dear Mr. Wilson, per our council's instructions, we are providing the above referenced provision information for your consideration. First off, the order enforcing the Jefferson County zoning ordinance fails to comply with Jefferson County ordinance number 2011 Act 1. In other words, the order is a null and void. Second, it is our understanding, the special meeting called for Wednesday, April 20th, is to address a violation of a nondescript zoning ordinance. The violation notice states that owners apply for conditional use permit to build and operate indoor/outdoor tactical defense by a range. According to said application, it was considered and denied at a public hearing on October 2nd, 2012, and November 7, 2012. However, according to the November 7, 2012 Board of Zoning Appeals regular meeting minutes discussing the shooting range, only one item did not pass, that was item 7, dealing with sound. Indiana Code 14-22-31.5-6, Title liability relating to noise, states, "A person who owns, operates, or uses a shooting range is not liable in any civil or criminal manner relating to noise or noise pollution that results from the operation or use of a shooting range if the construction and operation of the shooting range were legal at the time of its initial construction or initial operation, and the shooting range continues to operate in a manner that would have been legal at the time of inception or initial operation." On April 6, 2016, Sherri Chapeau requested from the Jefferson County Plan Commission copies of the county ordinances in effect ordered before July 1, 1996, regulating a shooting range, excuse me, as defined under Indiana Code 14-22-31.5-3. On April 13, 2016, R. Patrick McGrath stated, and I quote, "Jefferson County Plan Commission has reviewed the records regularly maintained by the office and has not located any records responsive to your request. With that said, should be noted that since 1991, the shooting range is an accessory use to our farm. Our family has enjoyed the shooting range since the purchase of our farm. Any regulation that denies the productive use of our land may easily violate the Ten Claws of the U.S. Constitution. Additionally, the existing use of our land and buildings by law may be protected from zoning regulations because the use of the property is grandfathered. Title 28 of the Jefferson County Code of Ordinances is silent as to shooting ranges, let alone addressing noise at April. As to Dr. Jesse and Tamara Duquette's complaint, it is clearly self-serving. It is full of unsubstantiated and false allegations and lacks any reference to any law violation. Their complaint is best characterized in this statement, and I quote, "When we bought our business in Madison, we were shown multiple properties of upcoming neighborhoods and doctor homes to buy, but chose to move to the country or deputy for space and peace on six acres plus. We love the drive and small-town feel. Automatic weapons fire, weapons fire of over 27 individuals and hand grenades going off for more than eight hours a day has taken that away from us," end quote. Notwithstanding the blatantly dishonest claims as to automatic weapons and grenades going off, the Duquettes are informing us, country folk, that we are not living up to their storybook fantasy of country life. Duquette's complaint demands we, country folk, fulfill their duty and police, but we know this is not reality. Some of us, country folk, do cling to our Bible and guns, it's our way of life. As stated above, Dr. Jesse and Tamara Duquette's complaint lacks any substance and fails to point to any legal precedent that supports their contention. The complaint should be dismissed for lack of merit. Therefore, after consultation, we believe the operation of the shooting range will survive any legal challenge. We hope the County Plan Commission considers all facts as it relates to this matter. Sincerely, Sherri Chapeau."
This is Sherri Chapeau. 10214 West Dupuy, and the subject of this meeting today. Mr. McGrath, I would like you to look at the order enforcing the Jefferson County zoning ordinance under the sections that were quoted here that are cited as 6.24C and 11.70, et cetera, et cetera. That does not relate to your zoning ordinances, which come under your zoning code ordinances that start with 28. So what you've done here is, I don't know what we're being cited for, for any type of violation here. I don't know what the 6.24C and 11.70 is pertaining to. That is why, in our first paragraph, we said, "The order is a null and void." I'm just asking for an answer from you as to how can we be here under this order if that code, how does that even apply to your zoning? What is the 6.24C and 11.70? And that's where we go back to the ordinance, the Jefferson County ordinance, number 2001 and 2. That codifies this whole thing, and that has to fall under Section 28, so I'm telling you that this doesn't stand, that we are wasting our time here today. I'd like to address some contentions also with the people that's, we aren't doing explosion targets, we're not doing 12 hours a day, we're not doing Sunday morning shoots, we are not doing camping. We are being responsible landlords, this is my land, I live on this land, I have. I do care about my neighbors, I care about the church, and I try to respect them. We don't do grenades, that's against the law. We comply with our FFL. Any type of restrictions, you guys try to close on the guns, in the ultimate, that echoes to both state and federal. We've been on this land, and grandfathered on this land from the time we bought it, which was in 1991. This range has been, our use of that range is a grandfathered use, and Jefferson County doesn't even address shooting ranges, you put us under sporting goods or bicycles. That was the closest thing you could find, we don't do sporting goods, we do guns, we don't also regulate guns. So to try to enforce something that you didn't do last and try to put us into a nice little box, that's a problem. You addressed that this was a problem, and that it was silent on shooting ranges in December of 2012, to picture a type of meeting here that we attended, and now we are in 2016, and nothing's happened. And now, and now I'm here telling you again that you don't have, you don't have a right to regulate the shooting range, you don't have the right to regulate my guns, I tried to play nice, I can't, no, I applied, and you put us under sporting goods. So I think that's about all that I have to say here. Oh, and we were approved for the guns, selling of the guns in October of 2012, not in November. It was continued because we wanted our neighbors to have time to come back, and we continued that to November. We were approved on all the points except for noise, which your zoning does, fails to address what noise levels are, and that was the reason why it wasn't, even if one of those points gets rejected, I understand that it is a rejection, but still it wasn't a point or a category that we even fit, it was where you tried to fit our sport pegging your rifle. And I'm sorry if it does upset people or scare them, because they look like it's assault rifle. It's legal, it's our law. And I just get into the fear of wondering, this doesn't have to do this, it includes the second amendment, right? We're providing a safe place, a family-oriented place. There's no place in Jefferson County for people to go. Even our sheriff's department gets to go over here in town, right next to the animal shelter, and everyone's from Walmart and other shopping. And I think that we're offering a valuable service to the citizens here, and we're doing it in a responsible way. We are with the NRA, the National Sports Shooting Foundation, we follow their guidelines, and we've had a very successful start that unfortunately, we're having to spend our time here trying to explain to you. Does anyone have questions?
Who is the range open to?
It's open to anyone, but they have to sign an identity agreement, basically showing that they're going to follow their range rules. And there is an identity requirement, same as there would be at any range that you are participating in an event at your own risk.
Amendment range has been open since 1991, or was it locked in 1991?
Does that matter? It doesn't define whether it was locked in or not.
Well, but how big was it?
Doesn't matter. The range was a range.
Well, I mean, then it could be two people, or it could be, now we got...
It could be one person, it doesn't matter if it's one or if it's 100.
Are you saying that by going out and not properly and shooting my weapon, that it's considered, I'm considered using my range?
Well, I don't know, you'd have to look at the law, whatever context that you're looking there, I'm not in a trade.
But would it be safe to say that your range has changed substantially since 1991?
I'd say that our range and our land has changed as we've grown.
What's the capacity of the range?
We've got a 10-bay shoot house, I'm sure if you guys looked at our website, know more than I can tell you here.
I don't really know much about ranges, how many people would that cover?
That means 10 bays would be 10 shooters. And that is capacity, and that's on the pistol range.
Is there another range?
There is a long range, it's open air.
How many lanes in that?
No lengths.
What's the capacity of that, just one person in?
That is one person, that or a group that is training in session.
How large of a group?
It depends on what we have going, and how many range safety officers that we have.
What would be the maximum group that could fit in there?
There's the, Joe, what would be that?
Long range. A long range, probably five or ten, probably three shooters in a column.
You do have Sunday afternoon shoots?
We do open at noon, and that's open to the public. And we do have lots of families and couples that come out, but not everybody's in body armor, no one's in body armor. People are in training here in order for fitness, the same as you would put weights on when you go out to exercise, a lot of them do that so that they can carry their gear with them easier.
Any more questions, Ms. Chapeau? Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Any more public comment?
Should we make a motion to close public comment?
Go ahead.
I'd make a motion, this time, close public comment. A second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now it's the end of the board to discuss, proceed from here, so open up for discussion.
Yeah, I'm a Second Amendment supporter, I'm not uncomfortable with guns, all of that, it's not a, I don't share some of the same fears that have been expressed by the public here this evening. But yet, on the other hand, from what I see, and I don't know the particulars and legalities of the nullification order and all of that, but from what has been provided to me, it appears that at some point in time, there was a recognition that there was a need for a conditional zoning in order to operate a commercial or public shooting range at that facility. And at that time, that our Board of Zoning listened to all of the information that was presented, and in the end, they made the decision that they would not grant that conditional use permit. So the only question before me this evening is, has that violation occurred by the operation of range? And in my opinion, it has occurred. And I think then the next step is, what enforcement actions do we want to take and recommend to the commissioners? I just don't see where it's my role to argue whether it should be or not, that that was already decided at a past deal, in past zoning board. already decided at a past deal, in past zoning board. And if that had not been acceptable at that time, it could have been challenged. And I don't know if it can still be challenged or not, or where it comes in, but it is an issue that if you wanted to have a shooting range there at this point, would we go back? Our ordinances may not address specifically shooting ranges, but I'm understanding that they address, if I wanted to operate any type of commercial or public business within an agricultural zone, I have to get a conditional permit for certain types of businesses to be able to operate? And this would be one of those businesses that you would have to have a conditional permit for, correct?
Yeah, we have the...
It's not one of the permitted uses for an agricultural area?
Yeah, we have the table for district regulations and uses. I'm not using the right title for it, but which actually designates, I mean, we have We have a lot of classifications, you know, but no statute can possibly get every single individual classification. In fact, there are...
And as far as whether what happens in the court of law down the road, someone above my pay grade gets to make those decisions.
Just so I'm clear, the conditional use on the gun shop did include the right to operate a range, though, but from a testing purposes, or am I mistaken on that?
Yeah, to test guns.
Was there specific language as to what encompassed testing, or did we just kind of leave that? I don't remember reading anything specific about it. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something. For those of you who were there, I'm assuming the intent was for the range not to be open to the public, correct?
There was a second... I mean, yeah, so the Board of Zoning Appeals voted on each individually, the shop and then the range.
Right, right.
And the range was voted down.
The range opened to the public, voted down.
And I did misspeak earlier. Ms. Chepo was right that the gun store was approved on October 7th, and that was at the first meeting. And then the range was what was continued to the second.
Continued to the second.
That was denied on November 7th, so...
Okay.
They started at the same meeting. One issue was finished at the first meeting, the other issue then was continued on the second.
Right.
Several years ago, we had this same situation brought up. The ones who were on the planning commission at that time remember when we had this same situation.
Yeah, that's pretty real.
And we amended the zoning ordinances and did a lot of work on that concerning the noise. I believe we even put the, whatever you call it, the...
The level.
The most level and everything in the zoning ordinances at that time. And I believe, because I live on Rector Road, and I hear the shooting at my house on Rector Road from their range. So the noise level where you have in here, it could be heard as far away as a half a mile. I'm a lot farther than a half a mile. And it is very loud, so I think that it would not pass just because of the noise, if nothing else. And it wasn't approved, so that's the bottom line. Wasn't approved.
The board members on the zoning board foresaw that, and that's why they denied it on 9/7.
That's exactly why.
I think the noise is the bottom line. Well, I kind of feel the bottom line is they were denied to operate, and even if it was totally quiet right now, they had electromagnetic railguns that made no noise. The fact is, the issue is they're operating a commercial open to the public gun range, a business. Listen, you don't even call it a gun range. You're operating a business that was specifically disapproved. And it doesn't matter if that business is painting ping pong balls. And I'm not a lawyer, but I'm assuming that we know they're in direct violation of an ordinance, and we don't enforce it. If we don't do something about it, it makes it very difficult to enforce anything, regardless of how you feel about it.
Well, it looks like they've already been served...
Yeah, you know, I...
...to stop. So what is our next move, Pat?
Well, historically, the Plan Commission has done typically two things, although certainly, you know, you can be creative, but typically, historically, there's either been a time to come into compliance. Obviously, in this situation, that would mean a complete shutdown of the business operation. And based on the testimony today, you would have to decide whether that's an appropriate method. Secondary to that would be to pursue injunctive relief through the circuit court. And we, as the Plan Commission, do have the authority to file for the injunctive relief, but again, historically, we go to the commissioners for approval of that before that process begins. So the injunctive action is taken in the name of the Jefferson County Plan Commission, but we have historically asked for a resolution from the Plan Commission before it goes to the commissioners, and then the commissioners would approve or deny whether or not litigation will go forward.
I guess I'm doing the talking, but I personally feel like they had been served with an order telling them to stop. They were told not to do it in the first place, and we need to move forward as fast as we can to make sure that they abide by the law. That's why we have a Plan Commission and a zoning board. And if they don't follow the ordinances and the directives that we put forth, then we might as well not have a zoning board or a Plan Commission. So that's the way I feel about it.
I agree.
So whatever the next move is, I feel like we need to go, walk forward.
Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd move that we immediately ask that the order enforcing the zoning county ordinance be reissued. If there are any defaults in such order, to correct those. If there's no faults, reissue it as written. If there are any valid faults, have the legal counsel review it, reissue that order. And that we advise the county commissioners that it's our recommendation that they pursue whatever legal means possible to enforce the cease and desist immediately.
I'll second it.
Is that... Any discussion among the board members on the motion?
Do we need to make it clear that actually, we're the ones who proceed with legal proceedings that we ask the commissioners for permission?
No, I like the idea of it going to the commissioners, and the commissioners pursuing the legal actions.
So, yeah.
It gets another attorney involved, gets a second set of eyes. I'm not wanting to delay it. I'm wanting for it to move forward in a timely manner. But I like the idea that there's another attorney involved, and the county takes another look, and everybody's on the same page and moves forward. It also gives the parties involved an opportunity to make their case one more time.
And to address that point, I mean, again, historically, the commissioners have made the decision as to whether they're going to handle it or turn it back over to us for litigation. So, I mean, and the last two times, they've turned it back to us. But generally speaking, the commissioners make that call, how they want to go forward on the litigation.
How soon can this... How soon could this take place?
The commissioners' meeting is May 6.
All right. We were called for a special meeting here. Can they be called for a special meeting to...
I can't answer that.
That would be up to the rules of procedures of the commissioners.
Can there be a special?
Yes. Perfect timing.
Yes, we can call a special meeting with proper notice ahead.
I'd like, possibly, you object to amend my motion, but what I'd like to be able to do is to word it in such a way that if the commissioners do refer it back to us with permission to proceed with legal action, that we can... You're instructed to go ahead and do so without another meeting of this board having to take place. I don't want to delay it for another notice of this meeting if it's came back to the commissioners that, yes, we want them to pursue it. That would be the only amendment. Are you... Second?
I'll still second.
I have one question. So in the meantime, they can continue doing what they're doing?
Our cease and desist order is still in effect, but...
But who's going to enforce that?
Well, it's a difficult issue. The way things stand right now, the Plan Commission's position is that the ordinance has been violated, and it's being recommended then for enforcement to the commissioners. Enforcement of the county ordinances, you know, is not what we do, other than making that recommendation. So, I mean, how's that for lawyers to speak? Basically, what I'm saying is...
I'm saying I don't understand.
No, you didn't. What I'm saying is that, no, I mean, from the Plan Commission's position, no, they're not, you know, if they're in violation of the ordinance, it's a violation of the ordinance. But this is the only method that we have for pursuing the enforcement, is to take it forward.
So they can continue doing what they're doing?
No, I did not say that. What I said is that if you vote to proceed with enforcement, which is in essence a vote that in fact there's been a violation, then we can proceed with the enforcement. In the meantime, you know, if it is found by the court to have been a violation, then it will have been a violation of time. And that would mean that they are in violation of the ordinance right now, which means that they're not allowed. But that, as Mr. Ochsler said, is for someone of a higher pay grade than even I to make the decision on, which would be the judge.
You're saying then the county commissioners, being that pay grade above you, wouldn't make that call?
Well, they make the call whether or not to proceed with the enforcement litigation, yes. And then that then in turn turns it to the circuit court.
Just procedurally, should we have a separate motion on whether or not there has been a violation, and then what to do about it? Or can we... Is it okay procedurally to combine it into one motion?
No, it's fine procedurally. It means you're proceeding with enforcement. I mean, I should be clear. The zoning enforcement officer has already found a violation and issued violation orders.
Got you, okay.
As you're doing, is then...
Deciding what to do about it. Okay, so that decision's already been made. Got you, got you.
But what I'm getting at, I like to see these neighborhoods get relief as soon as possible.
This is the fastest method that this Plan Commission, that this commission has to proceed with enforcement. We don't have authority outside of making that recommendation.
So the commissioners have to order them?
The commissioners would approve the litigation.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm going to speak out, but a judge?
That's what I was... I was just going to say.
A judge would have the authority to... Under our ordinances, the judge has authority to issue the actual fines as well as injunctive relief.
Right.
The judge could issue a temporary injunction for the operation until the issue's settled, may or may not, but that would be a possibility.
That is a possibility.
That could be asked for.
Yes. I mean, all due process would have to be followed before we get to that point, but yes.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Yes, in a really roundabout way.
Thank you.
Trade a discussion on the question of the motion. I think we're there. All in favor of the motion? Raise your right hand.
You should abstain.
Yes. Opposed? Okay. All right, so we move forward.
I should read the results into the meeting minutes? The count?
Should I read the count?
Everybody voted in favor, but nobody abstained.
Except for you abstaining. Okay, you got it. All right, good.
I'll draft then a resolution in form of the motion, and I would propose then that we have Lonnie sign it as a physical document then to turn over to the commissioners for their review of the commissioners' meeting. And then, historically, Gaye and I have attended the commissioners' meeting to explain that there has been a public hearing, what the decision of the Plan Commission was and recommendation of that commission was. So we'll take those steps. Right, Gaye? Gaye Jackson.
I reckon I have no choice. He's not answering.
I think that's all the business we have tonight. Sure. Unless somebody on the board's got something else they want to discuss. I hear motion, Judge.
I'll make the motion, Judge.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Raise your right hand.
Did I have it?
Judge. Thank you. Thank you for being courteous.
Oh, there it is.